I'd like to ask the Majority Leader for a motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, and good morning. I move that we adopt the agenda dated September 25, 2012.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, my second motion is that we delay Items 2, 3, 4, and 5, and we proceed to Item 6, which is roll call.
Hearing objections, so ordered. The Clerk would you please take roll call?
Senator Tom Ada. Senator Tony Ada. Senator Blas. Vice Speaker Cruz. Senator Duñez. Senator Guthardts. Senator Mabini. Senator Munia Barnes. Senator Palacios. Senator Panglinen. Senator Rispicio. Senator Rodriguez. Senator Silva Tyran. Speaker Wampat. Senator Yamashita. Madam Speaker, we through report there is a quorum.
Thank you very much. Senator Rispicio, you're recognized.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I call for the approval of the Legislative Journal dated August 20, 2012, through August 28, 2012, subject to corrections.
On that motion, objections ordered.
Madam Speaker, there are communications and petitions, and I move that these communications and petitions be appended to today's session in Journal.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, there are messages from Imagallay in Guam, and I move for the same.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, there are reports of standing committees, and I also move that these reports from the standing committees be appended to today's session in Journal.
Objections, so ordered.
Madam Speaker, there are reports of select committees, and if there are any, I move that they also be appended to today's session in Journal.
Objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. On Item 12, introduction and first reading of bills and resolutions, I move, ma'am, that Bill Number 508-31COR to Bill Number 516-31COR be given its first reading.
No, that's Bill Number. Hearing objections, so ordered.
As well as Resolution Number 491-31 to Resolution 514-31COR also be given its first reading.
Senator, can I ask if that 514 is the resolution?
It was Resolution 514-31.
It's not after, I think, Senator Munia Barnes had just introduced. So it's 515?
Okay. So Resolution Number 491-31 to Resolution 515-31 be given its first reading.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
Thank you. And Certificate Numbers 159-31 to 165-31 be also given its first reading.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, my next motion is to delay Items 13, sub-Items 1 through 8 on this agenda. These deals with the overrides.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, my other motion is that any resolution in congratulatory or commendatory nature that's introduced for the duration of this session be adopted, and that all members be cosponsors, and that the legal counsel and the clerk work with the sponsors of these resolutions or certificates in the preparation of these documents. That be so adopted.
Hearing objections, so ordered.
My next motion, Madam Speaker, is to place Resolution 486-31. It's introduced by Senator Barnes, Munia Barnes, and Vice Speaker Cruz, and it's relative to voicing Ilacetuan Guam's continued support for the full implementation of public law 110-229, and requesting that the U.S. Secretary of Homeland Security, the Honorable Janet Napolitano, provide for the issuance of a China visa waiver program through a parole authority, and the issuance of a broader final rule for the Marianas visa waiver program. This has had a public hearing conducted by Senator Barnes, and I move that this be placed in the second reading file.
Objections, so ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, my next motion is relative to Bill 516-31, and we are in receipt of a letter from Senator Panglinen, and Speaker Panglinen writes to you requesting for emergency declaration or waiver of a public hearing requirement rather. And he writes, "The United States Department of Education has granted the governor's request to extend the deadline from September 30, 2012, to September 30, 2013, the date by which Guam must obligate funds under the adequate education trust account." And the good senator here appeals to you, Madam Speaker, citing that these were items of the budget bill and subject of a prior public hearing. And so at this time, I request for your disposition on Senator Panglinen's request.
Thank you very much, Senator Rispicio. After speaking with the senator and carefully evaluating the request, I certify then that Bill Number 516-31 meets one of the requirements set forth in Section 2103, subsection A of Title II, Guam Code Annotated, and the requirement for a public hearing is hereby waived.
Thank you very much. Having received that declaration, I move then to place Bill 516-31 on the second reading file.
On that motion, without any objections, ordered.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I think we have some, a couple minutes before the official delegation arrives and honors us with their presence, so at this time, I'm going to go ahead and move that we go to the second reading file, and that we entertain discussion on Senator Barnes's resolution. And as soon as we see the delegation from Pangasinan, no matter where we are at in that discussion, I respectfully ask that we stop, suspend those discussions, and allow me to provide a motion to resolve in the committee of the whole for entertaining our honored guests. So I move that we go to the second reading file.
So on that motion, without any objections, so ordered. We are... Senator Rispicio on the motion.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, notwithstanding the House rules, I move that we revert back to motions.
Without any objections, so ordered.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move that we resolve in the committee of the whole for purposes of formally establishing a sister-city relationship between the province of Pangasinan, Republic of the Philippines, and the island of Guam pursuant to Resolution Number 299-31, which was adopted on January 20, 2012. And I further move to have me chair the committee of the whole, giving my oversight over foreign affairs, and to allow the delegation from Pangasinan headed by Governor Espino, and to further allow all members of the Federation of Pangasinan Seas on Guam headed by its President, Major Vic Rivo, as well as Congresswoman Malin Burdali, be allowed to enter the session hall for these very formal proceedings.
On that motion, without any objections, so ordered.
And I move that we recess and...
We'll take a brief recess to bring our guests in.
Standing for the Guam hymn, followed by the National Anthem, the Philippine National Anthem, and the Pangasinan Anthem. Please remain standing for the Ina Fresi. I'd like to invite up Senator Tom Ada, and also invite up for the prayer, former Speaker and Senator Vicente Panglinen.
Ina Fresi. Gininimas tat kilu gihinasoku. Imas takhalum gikurasonhu. Zanimas figu naninaxsinyahu. Uu fresin maisazu para baihu protehi. Zanhu defendi i hinengi i koutura i lingwahi i ari i hanum zanitano tsomoro. Ni irin shaku derezo gininazu u stota esti hua fitma gihilo i biblia zan ibanderahu ibandera Guam.
Please bow your heads. Ginanitata ilahinyadani spiritus santo. Amen. Juu stota mangaiyam gwinipaugu para birinshibi i kanai esti imangaiyina bisitata. Ni ma extendi kanainia zamakusa itasi. Porofanu yami grasianigagi kurasonia ni ompega guihi. Mangaiyesti paugu para binatfitma i inafamoulik zaninagunefui naninu finanagwemu para todui tau tau mo gwinigitano. Dear Lord, we thank you very much for extending the opportunity to greet our guests this morning, who you have filled their hearts with grace and togetherness, who have extended their hand across the ocean to affirm your teaching of one world, one people, in your eyes. We ask that you bless this event and continue to fill all of our hearts with our love for our fellow man and the friendship that we are about to forge. This we ask through the graciousness of your Mother Mary and the sacrifices that you have paid for us with your son, Jesus Christ. Ginanitata ilahinyadani spiritus santo. Amen.
Thank you very much, Speaker Ben and Senator Ada. Please be seated. Good morning. Buenos half a day. Masantes salibre. Masantes salabi. So I want to begin this program, and before I invite up to the podium our Vice Governor from Pangasinan to honor us with the introduction of all the special guests and the delegation and the head of the delegation, as you say, Vice Governor, the father of the transformation in Pangasinan, right? And so I'd like to first welcome Congresswoman Burdali and thank her for joining us this morning. Thank you, ma'am, for being here. I know it is an official proceeding of the legislature, but we can kind of relax a little bit, and it should be a joyous festive occasion. It's a lot worthy of, a lot to celebrate this morning, and so please help me invite up to the podium to do the introduction of the official Pangasinan delegation, the Honorable Vice Governor Pangasinan Jose Ferdinand Calimlim Jr.
Thank you very much, Senator Rispicio. A pleasant morning to all our honorable members of the Guam Legislature, Congresswoman Burdali, to the Federation of Pangasinan Seas on Guam. With us is the official delegation from the province of Pangasinan. And may I just say that as counterparts, each senator of the Guam Legislature in the province of Pangasinan, each legislator is called board member, but they are actually our provincial senators as well. So allow me to also address them as provincial senators, just like you. But with us is the father of our province, the man behind the transformation of the province of Pangasinan. He is best known as the action man of the province of Pangasinan, our father, Governor Amado T. Espino Jr. As you very well know, every action man has an inspiration behind all of his great actions. The woman behind the great man, our First Lady, our Mother, Priscilla Meli Espino. Right beside the Congresswoman representing the Second District and the municipal, the capital town of Lingayan, Provincial Senator Von Mark Mendoza. Next to him, from the Third Congressional District, is a miufite senator, but coming from a family of public servants, Provincial Senator Heniroso Tulagan Jr. Next to him is our Majority Floor Leader, one of the longest-serving board members or senators of the province of Pangasinan, our Majority Floor Leader, Provincial Senator Angel Baniqued Junior, Senior. Quite obviously, the gentleman beside him, he is regarded as the eternal board member, one of the longest-serving, if not the longest-serving provincial board member, Provincial Senator Alfonso Binse Jr. The strong man. Next to him, in a white shirt, representing the Fourth Congressional District, and again, a former three-term mayor, Provincial Senator Mohamito Libunao Jr. From the Fifth Congressional... Our provincial senator from the Fifth District, Danilo Siui. Representing all the 400, almost 500 councilmen in the province of Pangasinan, their league president, and now provincial board member, soon to be a regular board member provincial senator, Salvador S. Salvador S. Perez Jr. Our senior board member, number three in rank in the provincial legislature, vying for mayor of the pilgrimage town of Manawag, Senior Board Member, Senator Jeremy Aherico Rosario. Next to him is the gentleman who heads all the barangay officials, all 1,333 barangays or villages in the province of Pangasinan. He is the brother of our beloved governor, Provincial Senator Amadeo Espino, and his lovely wife, Madame Bong. And last but not the least, the lady in blue is our Secretary to the Legislature, Attorney Verna Nava Perez. These ladies and gentlemen are the members of the delegation from the province of Pangasinan. Pleasant morning.
Thank you very much. How about another round of applause to our Vice Governor? You know, when Senator Guthardts and I were in Pangasinan, and we met this group for the first time, having understand that the provincial board is like a legislature, and then the governor and vice-governor is like the governor and lieutenant-governor of Guam, but in Pangasinan, they're just one in the same. And when you get to meet the man that I'm going to introduce further on in the program, Governor Espino, you're going to know why they're one in the same, because he's very commanding. And they respect him a lot, and we just have a lot to share with you. I want to recognize the Council General of the Philippines, Council General Bayani Magibing. He recognized. And he is joined by the Vice Counsel, Maria Paz Cortez. And also Counsel Edgar Thomas Axilian. At this time, I'd like to invite our honorable Vice Speaker BJ Cruz to introduce members of the Minatentay Unun Ilacetuan Guam.
Honorable Governor, and distinguished delegates from the province of Pangasinan. It gives me great pleasure to introduce my colleagues in the Guam Legislature, and I grabbed the wrong sheet. I was given instructions to give the... When you get to this stage, you have memories lapses. The Speaker of the Guam Legislature, the Honorable Judith T. Wampat, is also Chairman of the Committee on Education and Public Education. And I am the Vice Speaker Benjamin Cruz. I serve as the Chairman of Committee on Youth Cultural Affairs, Procurement, General Governmental Operations, and Public Broadcasting. Our Legislative Secretary and Chairman of the Committee on Municipal Affairs, Tourism, Housing, and Recreation, the Honorable Senator Tina Rose Munia Barnes. Your Senator Pangasinan and our Committee on Rules Chair, Federal Foreign and Micronesian Affairs and Human Natural Resources, the Honorable Roy Rispicio. Your daughter, Judith T. Guthardts, Chairman of the Committee on Guam Military Buildup and Homeland Security. The youngest member of our legislature who was born the year that I first ran and lost for office. Senator Dennis Rodriguez Jr., Chairman of the Committee on Health, Human Services, Economic Development, Senior Citizens, and Election Reform. The Chairman of the Committee on Utilities, Transportation, Public Works, and Veterans Affairs, the Honorable Senator Thomas Ciada. The Chairman on Committee on Public Safety, Law Enforcement, and Judiciary, the Honorable Adolf P. Palacios Senior. And the Chairman of Committee on Appropriations, Taxations, Public Debt, Banking, Insurance, Retirement, and Land, our former Speaker and Senator Vicente Steve Panglinen. The Minority Leader of the Guam Legislature, and also from a very distinguished political family, the Honorable Frank F. Blas Jr. The Assistant Minority Leader, also from a distinguished political family, and whose father was president of the University of Guam, Dr. Aileen Y. Yamashita, Senator. The Minority Whip, and also Senator, a former member of the Guam Legislature, Anthony V. Anthony Ada. The Assistant Minority Whip, Manas Silva Tyran. Senator Christopher M. Duñez. The Honorable Senator and Doctor Sam Mabini. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vice Speaker. You know, the Vice Speaker does know every single member of the legislature, but I think everything happens for a reason to demonstrate, just like Vice Governor, how you never speak out of script, so does our Vice Speaker, and I'm going to share with you in a minute why he does that. He does that because the next person I'm going to invite up to give welcoming remarks is the leader of our legislature. She's someone who continues to raise the bar, and from the moment of her leadership, she said to us that we should only be using the session hall for state functions, for the addresses by the governor of Guam, by the Congresswoman, our representative, the U.S. House of Representatives, for official state functions and functions that are sanctioned by the Guam Legislature. So the very fact that we're able to be here in this session hall to do this kind of officiating, the official sister-city relationship between the province of Pangasinan and the people of Guam, I'm also grateful, Madam Speaker, that you called us into session and you allowed us to resolve in the committee of the whole for this very special presentation, and we're hopeful that this presentation meets your continued standard. And she's a lifelong educator, principal, but she seems like she never left that role. She tells us where to sit, and she makes sure that everything is in order, and that we are united, and that we represent the legislature pursuant to our rules and pursuant to the expectations of the people of Guam. So at this time, Madam Speaker, it's my honor to invite you to the podium to give the welcoming remarks.
And I'd like to thank Senator Rispicio, of course, for the podium, this little stool, otherwise this podium will be taller than I. Buenos and half a day. Governor Espino. Buenos and half a day, Governor Espino, Vice Governor Kalimlim, distinguished members of the Pangasinan delegation, ladies and gentlemen, and my fellow colleagues, and Congresswoman Bordalio, thank you so much for joining us. She too is a former member of this house as well. It is a great pleasure and privilege for me and the members of the 31st Guam Legislature to welcome you all to Guam. You come to us as a valued and a very welcome friend. For it is with the efforts of Senator Roy Respecho and Dr. Judith Guthers that we are able to forge this bond, and we are very pleased to begin the process of developing a sister-city relationship with the province of Pangasinan. And we look forward to developing friendships that we hope will last us for a lifetime with the signing of Resolution 299-31-COR today. I am confident that this relationship will create many economic, cultural, educational, and social opportunities in this era of globalization. This is a great opportunity for our community to become a viable economic participant in Asia, and I believe this union will open the doors to business opportunities and investments, which in turn will see the development of cultural, art, and music connections as well as growth in our tourism industry. Guam and the Philippines share a similar historical background, an indigenous lineage, which is fertile ground on which to plant a sister-city relationship that will grow strong cultural and economic ties in the future. Many Pangasinans from your province call Guam home, and I'm sure they are proud and productive members of our island. Governor Espino and Vice Governor Kalimlim, I not only welcome you and your colleagues to Guam, but I also encourage your efforts in laying the foundations of such a long-term relationship between our island of Guam and the province of Pangasinan in the Republic of the Philippines, which will be beneficial to all of us. Sidhuwes Marasi and Merami Salamakpo.
Thank you very much, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen, just as... Thank you very much, Madam Speaker, for those very gracious remarks. Just as we're honored to have our members from Pangasinan here in the session hall, I know that we're also aware that the members of the Pangasinancis on Guam are honored to have you here on the island of Guam. And so, on behalf of Senator Guthers and I, and members of the legislature who you first invited to join with you to go on this mission, to explore this possibility, this sister-city relationship, I want to call up for some remarks Major Vic Rivo, who is President of the Federation of Pangasinancis on Guam. Again, please, Mr. Rivo.
To all our guests, good morning. Madam Speaker, and members of this august body, we are voting yes. The board, the entire board, officers and members of the Pangasinan community are voting yes for thanking you for this opportunity this morning, and most importantly, for unanimously voting or passing this resolution of agreement for sisterhood relationship between our home province of Pangasinan and our beautiful island of Guam. Also, in behalf of my membership of the entire Pangasinan, in Guam, a large community in Guam, a member of the Filipino community in Guam, we would also like to thank you for making us a part of history. I know each of us has their own personal history, and to me personally, it added a page in my history. Way back in 1986, I have the honor of a Filipino ethnicity to be selected as the first Filipino police officer of Guam in the entire United States. I thank the late Speaker Antonio Wan-Pat for having my name included in the archives of U.S. Congress. I thank the old man, thank you very much. And I also thank Chief Judy Guthers. A Pangasinanci myself, it's a big opportunity rendered to us. And that history was repeated in 1989, when my brother was also selected as Police Officer of the Year. There is nothing, there's no other Filipinos in the entire United States that earned that award. So I hope that with this relationship, more opportunities be afforded to my province mates, who will continue to be proactive members of the community. Whatever issues that will be good, beneficial for the island, we are always supporting. Thank you very much, and good morning.
Thank you very much, Major Vic. Can we please ask the members of the Federation of Pangasinancis to please also rise to be acknowledged, beginning with Auntie Gloria, please? Everybody, Tita Gaga Win. You know, members, this organization is also very well-run, headed by its president and vice-president, and their other officers and board of directors, and we know that they've done a lot for our community. But also, we know that they've spearheaded some very successful medical missions to Pangasinan. And I know that the governor and his vice-governor and his delegation is also very grateful, and we would hear from them soon. But the next individual I'd like to call up is the Assistant Majority Leader Judith B. Guthers. We know that she has extensive education in the Philippines, at the University of the Philippines. She's a dear colleague here in the legislature. She works very hard to keep us close to the community and the issues that affect our community. And without further ado, I'd like to invite up Senator Guthers to give some brief remarks.
Thank you, Senator Respecho. Good morning, colleagues. Good morning, Madam Speaker. Good morning, Governor. Good morning, Vice Governor. Good morning, provincial senators, board members, and their delegation. First Lady, good morning, welcome. And our Congresswoman, good morning, and thank you for joining us. This is a great day for this legislature, and this is a great day for all the people of Guam. Join me in saying, "Biba Pangasinan, biba Pangasinan, biba Pangasinan." You know, Governor, and Vice Governor, and delegation, and Council General, Senator Respecho and I have waited for almost a year for this to happen. When we had the opportunity to join the Association of Pangasinancis to visit the province of Pangasinan, to start the development of the sisterhood relationship, the sister-city relationship, it was a dream come true. Visiting the province, seeing the progress of the province, seeing the identification of the people of Pangasinan for their history, for their history during the pre-Spanish period, their history during the Spanish period, their history during the U.S. colonial period, and their modern history was very inspiring to us. And I thought about how common our histories are. Almost 300 years of Spanish colonization, the vestiges which still show today on our island and much of our historical infrastructure, the history of our colonial development under the U.S. naval government and your Commonwealth government during the U.S. period, how much we had in common, and our modern histories really go hand in hand. Colleagues, if you visit the province of Pangasinan, you will see an enthusiasm and an energy in the people and an entrepreneurship of the people of Pangasinan that we should try and replicate here on our island. The people of Pangasinan are industrious. The people of Pangasinan are motivated to strive for more and more education, and the people of Pangasinan are motivated to also be independent and self-sustaining based on their creativity, based on their commitments to their jobs and their career development, and all the things that we talk about in this legislature. One of the most inspiring things that I saw in Pangasinan was the efforts of the governor to restore the pride of the provincial capital. It's amazing to see the provincial capital in Pangasinan. They took facilities that they inherited from the U.S. colonial period and restored them to their majesty. Unbelievable, the capital, the capital complex, the history that has been embedded in designing and upgrading and bringing back the historical roots of the capital facility. Inspired me to want to support doing the same thing here in our capital city. And it has begun, Governor. The Congressional Building, the Congress Building, which used to house the Guam Legislature, is going to be restored because of the leadership in this legislature. The Plaza de España, which you visited, is going to be restored because of a joint initiative between this legislature and the executive branch, and the efforts of Senator BJ Cruz to identify a money source to do it, and he's done that. We're also going to have a museum, similar to a museum that you've developed in the province of Pangasinan, right here in our capital, to showcase the history of the people of Guam and all the different influences over history. The history of the island have infused our island and brought it to where it is today, including the Spanish history, including the history of patriots from the Philippines being exiled to Guam during the Spanish period. That's part of our history, that would be part of the showcasing of our museum here. So what I would like to say to my colleagues who've never gone to Pangasinan, you're in for a treat if you're able to go. You will see things there that will inspire you to continue your work here to help our people, to continue your work to focus on not forgetting the history and roots of Guam, which are very similar to the history and roots of the province of Pangasinan. Looking to the future, what I see and what Senator Respecho saw was the opportunities for economic interaction with the province of Pangasinan. The province of Pangasinan produces goods and products they export all over the world, and Guam should be a beneficiary of their exports. They have products they produce that are very usable here in our construction industry. They have products that they produce that are usable in our home design industry. And more than that, they also have a well-trained workforce that would be very much able to infuse in our island skills that will be needed for the future, particularly if our buildup matures and we need to bring workers from other places. So I'm hoping, Governor, and Vice Governor, and members of the provincial board, our senatorial colleagues from Pangasinan, that in the future we will have economic exchanges, cultural exchanges, and educational exchanges. And for those of you that are educators here in this legislature, my colleagues, the Speaker, Dr. Yamashida, Senator Mabini in particular, they have a university in Pangasinan. They have a university for the province. And there's a lot of educational exchanges that could also occur between our university, our community college, and the university in Pangasinan. So with that, I'd like to welcome you, and I want to thank you for showcasing the province to us, and to let you know and ask you to please consider Guam your second home. Thank you very much.
Is there a motion that we have provided unanimous consent to Senator Guthers' records? Agree with that and append that to the record? Hearing no objections, this motion carries. And so the next individual I'd like to invite up is a son of Pangasinan, the Honorable Philippine Consul General to Guam, Bayani Mangabin.
Thank you, Senator Respecho. I'm sorry, I'm back to losing my voice again. Honorable Governor Amado Espino, and the beautiful First Lady of Pangasinan, Honorable Vice Governor Jose Ferdinand Kalimlim Junior, and the members of the provincial board, our provincial senators, Honorable Congresswoman Madeline Bordalio, our gracious host, the honorable members of the 31st Legislature under the able leadership of Madam Speaker Judith Wan-Pat, distinguished officers and members of the Federation of Pangasinancis Guam, my partners at the Philippine Consulate General. Ladies and gentlemen, half a day in Guam. And in the Philippines, we say mabuhay. I have to start my remarks with a greeting of mabuhay, not merely to respond to the "Viva Pangasinan" of Senator Judy Guthers, but more to state what each and every one of us, particularly the members of this delegation, would like to convey to the 31st Legislature of Guam. We would like to say to you, mabuhay or long live, because you have supported and assisted the Filipino community here to, in the words of Speaker Judy, sorry, Judith Wan-Pat, call Guam a home. This august body has been so instrumental in fostering and enriching and a more harmonious relationship between the Philippines and Guam. Today, it gives us another reason to say mabuhay to you. And again, as I said, not to respond to "Viva Pangasinan", because many of my countrymen here, particularly the members of the Filipino community, are deeply pleased that you have honored us. Just this morning, Senator Roy Respecho stated that you have enabled us to make a special use of this very august chamber, and we are so much such. But not only that, today, we are deeply honored that there is going to be this presentation of Legislative Resolution Number 299-31 relative to the establishment of a city, of a sister-city relationship between the people of the province of Pangasinan and the people of the islands of Guam. We are deeply honored that, it is not only on this occasion, but several times, that's why we are saying mabuhay to you, that's why we are saying that we are deeply honored and pleased that the 31st Legislature has done so much in enriching the relationship between the Philippines and Guam. As a matter of fact, a year ago, in this very chamber, on October 7, I understand, 2011, there was a resolution introduced by Senator Roy, Roy Respecho, and Senator Guthers, who are adopted as children of Pangasinan, together with Senator Tina Munya Barnes. I understand that was the Resolution Number 216-31, wherein you have first expressed the interest of the 31st Legislature to establish this relationship. And what have honored us is the fact that this resolution was passed unanimously. Yes, all the members of this August 31st Legislature of Guam have become the godparents of this offspring we call the sister-city relationship and friendship affiliation. And because of that, we are here to say viva Guam!
Viva Guam!
And mabuhay to the 31st Legislature of Guam.
Thank you very much for those remarks. You know, the Consul General is correct. We didn't just pick up and join the delegation of Pangasinan Sis and go to Pangasinan. We did it in a fashion where first we adopted a resolution exploring the possibility. Then we were honored to join Major Vic Rivo and his delegation to Pangasinan. Senator Guthers and I witnessed firsthand how this is not a province at all, it's a city. It's a city that's remarkable. And through the leadership of Governor Espino and Vice Governor Kalimlim and the entire Provincial Board, you will not think that you're anywhere, you would probably think you're on Guam. You would probably think you're on Guam. And based on the feedback that we've been getting from you over the last several days, I think that statement is correct. There's a lot of similarities between the Philippines and Guam, but also between specifically Pangasinan and Guam. And for that, I'd like to help recognize and ask Senator Tina Munya Barnes to read the Resolution 299, which was adopted on January 20, 2012, which began this sister-city relationship, which encouraged the people of Guam's support for this relationship. And I'm honored to invite Senator Barnes to read the resolution. Senator Barnes is our Legislative Secretary and she has oversight over the Guam Visitors Bureau. And I know she's happy and gleaming with pride because just minutes ago, you witnessed this legislature address the ongoing effort to secure the China visa waiver along with the effort to secure the Philippine visa waiver, if not the Guam-Philippine visa waiver. And I know, Consul General, that's high on your agenda of priority concerns. So Senator Barnes?
Sinamasi, Senator Ruspecho, Hafadeh Mananasidus to Governor, Vice Governor, First Lady, Congresswoman Bordalio, Consul General Bayani, and the distinguished delegation from Pangasinan. Imina 31 Lislatur in Guam, that's 2012 regular session, Resolution Number 299-31 COR, introduced by Senator Rory J. Ruspecho, JP Guthers, D.P.A.T.C., T.C. Ada, and all other senators, relative to the establishment of the sister-city relationship between the province of Pangasinan and the Republic of the Philippines and Guam in order to encourage the further growth of friendship, camaraderie, and commerce for the benefit of the people of both regions. Be it resolved by Imina 31 Lislatur in Guam, whereas the bond between the people of Guam and the people of the Republic of the Philippines has grown stronger over the years as the two neighbors in the Western Pacific Ocean share many of the same influences, both political and cultural. And whereas a number of Guam residents can trace their roots back to the Philippines and specifically to the province of Pangasinan in Luzon, which is often referred to as the heartland of the Philippines. And whereas the people of Guam, along with our brothers and sisters from the Republic of the Philippines and especially those from the province of Pangasinan, share more commonalities than differences. And together, we can better prepare for a future of unprecedented opportunities toward the sustained growth of our communities. And whereas the relationship between the good neighbors on both sides of the Philippine Sea was further strengthened when the Federation of Pangasinan on Guam was recently recognized by Lislatur in Guam and were designated as honorary goodwill ambassadors at large for the people of Guam as they embarked on their important medical mission to the province of Pangasinan to help the impoverished people living in small towns in the province who are unable to afford medical care. And whereas with the good people of both Guam and Pangasinan finding common ground, working together, assisting each other, and helping to make the most of future opportunities, the official establishment of a sister-city relationship between Guam and Pangasinan would be highly beneficial. And whereas such a sister-city relationship is defined as an officially approved, long-term partnership between two communities from different countries, and such official relationships can involve very diverse activities, including municipal, professional, educational, cultural, and business-related projects. And whereas it is therefore the intent of Lislatur in Guam to request of the Honorable Amado T. Espino Jr., Governor of the Province of Pangasinan, Republic of the Philippines, and the Honorable Jose Ferdinand Z. Kalimlim Jr., the Vice Governor and Presiding Officer of the Provincial Board of the Province of Pangasinan, Republic of the Philippines, their concurrence in an official, long-term sister-city relationship between the Province of Pangasinan, Republic of the Philippines, and the island of Guam. Now, therefore, be it resolved that Imina 31 Lislatur in Guam, on behalf of our people of Guam, does hereby request the concurrence of the Governor and Vice Governor of the Province of Pangasinan, Republic of the Philippines, for the establishment of a sister-city relationship with the people of Guam, United States of America. And be it further resolved that the Speaker certify and the Legislative Secretary attest to the adoption whereof and that copies of the same be thereafter transmitted to the Honorable Amado T. Espino Jr., Governor of the Province of Pangasinan, to the Honorable Jose Ferdinand Z. Kalimlim Jr., Vice Governor and Presiding Officer of the Seningyang Palanglangwingan of the Province of Pangasinan, to the members of the Provincial Board of the Province of Pangasinan, to Major Vic R. Rivo Senior, Retired President of the Federation of Pangasinan Sis of Guam, to the officers of the Board of Directors of the Federation of Pangasinan Sis of Guam, to the Honorable Edward Thomas Auxilian Counsel of the Philippines Guam Council at Office, to the Honorable Harry K. Thomas Junior Ambassador of the United States of America to the Republic, to the Republic of the Philippines, to His Excellency Benigno Simon Aquino III, President of the Republic of the Philippines, to His Excellency Jay Jomar Benai, Vice President of the Republic of the Philippines, and to the Honorable Congresswoman Madeline Z. Bordalio, to the Honorable Edward J.B. Cavill Imagelay in Guam. Ladies and gentlemen, this was duly and regularly adopted by Imina 31 Lislatur in Guam on the 20th day of January 2012. It was signed by our Speaker, Speaker Judith T. Wanpat, and Legislative Secretary, myself, Senator Tina Rose Munya Barnes. Sinamasi.
Thank you very much.[1093.04][1093.04](Applause) Thank you very much. If I can, invite our Speaker Wanpat, Senator Guthers, and all other members of the legislature to assist in this presentation. I'd like to also make sure that we recognize the President of the Filipino Community of Guam, Ms. Lea Bethna Halawa. Thank you.[1254.29][1254.29](Applause) And last night, there was a, there was a reception. And someone that was recognized last night is someone that is still worthy of being recognized by members of this legislature. I'd like to recognize Mr. Alfredo Antilin, who is the Director of AHRD.[1273.83][1273.83](Applause) At this time, I'd like to invite up here to make a special presentation to the delegation and to Major Vic Rivo, the Honorable Madeline Z. Bordalio. As the Speaker pointed out, she served five terms in this House. Five terms is 10 years, ladies and gentlemen. And she's our current Congresswoman and our Representative, the U.S. House of Representatives.
Hafadeh and mabuhay.
Mabuhay.
I, um, the U.S. Congress is in recess. So I arrived here about four days ago. And in all those four days, I've been to at least four or five Pangasinan events.[1337.04][1337.04](Laughter/Applause) So I do declare, as I look at all the residents here of the province of Pangasinan from the Philippines, I think they should be declared official residents of Guam.[1353.25][1353.25](Laughter/Applause) But no kidding aside, it's been a very eventful week for me. And I want to go on record to thank Speaker Wanpat for inviting me here. They never know when I'm going to be here or in Washington, D.C. So I'm so pleased that I was here for this great event of the sister-city signing. And so Speaker Wanpat, thank you very much. And I will mention too that the Speaker's father held the position as a Congressman in Washington, D.C. He was our first. Speaker Wanpat.[1392.62][1392.62](Applause) And I'd also like to thank Rory Ruspecho, who's, I know, has coordinated a lot of these affairs, and Senator Judy Guthers, who's also, and all of you. And I miss this place. I sat here for 10 years.[1411.41][1411.41](Applause) And I can remember some very vigorous debates. I'll just leave it at that. While Judy Guthers was commenting on the province of Pangasinan and how beautiful it was and all the beautiful buildings and what a wonderful exchange this is going to be for our island and the province of Pangasinan in the Philippines, Senator and Consul Member Mendoza, who's sitting right next to me, he says, "And we have more fun in our province too."[1444.95][1444.95](Laughter) So I'm, I'm not going, I didn't ask him for details.[1451.04][1451.04](Laughter) But it gives me a great deal of pleasure to be able to present at least a small token from the U.S. Congress to our delegation. It's a certificate of special recognition. And I want to present this to the Honorable Amado T. Espino Jr., who is the Governor and very popular Governor of this great province with 2.5 million citizens. Is that correct? 2.8.
Just increased by 300,000.
Just increased by 300,000.[1484.95][1484.95](Laughter) That's because we're all going to go from Guam and visit you.[1489.04][1489.04](Laughter) But I'm just going to make it very simple, it's for all of you. But to you, Governor, thank you for coming and your lovely friend. And also, I have another certificate for the Honorable Jose Ferdinand Z. Kalimlim Jr., the Vice. And I told him that I held that position on Guam for eight years as well.[1529.45][1529.45](Laughter/Applause) And the third is for our own leader of the Pangasinan Associations, and that's Major Vic R. Rivo Senior Retired,[1555.66][1555.66](Applause) the President of the Pangasinan Organizations on Guam.[1560.83][1560.83](Applause) Thank you again, and sidus masi and ramings salamat po.[1579.04][1579.04](Applause)
Thank you very much, Congresswoman. At this time, I'd like to introduce the man of the hour, who is with this very distinguished delegation. You've heard the Congresswoman say that he's a Governor to 2.8 million people in Pangasinan. And when Senator Guthers and I were there with Major Vic and Antilita and the rest of the group, they presented the sister-city relationship while they were in session. And so, colleagues, thank you again for giving us the opportunity to reciprocate. And your participation means a lot to everybody here. And so, Governor, sir?[1627.12][1627.12](Applause)
Rory, I think I need the stool.
Oh.
No, no, no.[1637.54][1637.54](Laughter)
You see how I jumped?[1640.33][1640.33](Laughter) Come here, meron, meron.
That's all right. I think I could do.[1648.04][1648.04](Laughter) The honorable members of the Legislature of Guam, headed by the distinguished Juliet Wanpat, Congresswoman Madeline Bordalio, our Consul General, Bayani Mangibin, and all the members of the Consular Staff, of course, the President here of the Pangasinan Association, Major Vic Rivo and Mrs. Rivo, and also the Association of the Filipino Sherin Guam, headed by Miss Leah Beth Nahuluwa, my Province Mage from Pangasinan, my fellow workers in the Provincial Government. We call it Sangguneang Palalawigan. Some, you were smiling a while ago when the Secretary was saying that, you know. We call it our Provincial Board, we call it Sangguneang Palalawigan. That is the Provincial Board of the Province. Ladies and gentlemen, good morning. After Senator Guthers had spoken a while ago, and of course, our Consul General, I do not see any more need to talk here because they have said everything already. But in any way, we have prepared some notes for you. So you might as well read it. Ladies and gentlemen, today marks the beginning of a new milestone in the history of Guam and Pangasinan. This is the day that sits forth our common ideals and aspirations as we agree to jointly harness and mobilize resources in confronting the challenges of global economic competitiveness. Our common history, culture, and trading experience dates back in the colonial past when both Guam and Pangasinan were discovered 10 days apart by Magellan in March 6, here, and in March 16, 1521, in the Philippines, and consequently exposed to international trade and commerce through the Spanish Manila Galions that covered... that covered the Pacific trade routes between Acapulco, Mexico, and Manila between the years 1668 and 1815. In 1672, a 17-year-old Filipino altar boy from the island of Cebu offered his life right here in the sacred ground of Guam. It was a rare patriotic deed that settled for us today the meaning of genuine brotherhood. Next month, on October 21st, that young martyr Pedro Calungso will be canonized in Rome as the second Filipino saint in the annals of Roman Catholicism. It is the destiny of Saint Who that has drawn us closer as we attempt to nurture our twin cultural heritage as a source of inspiration for all of us to achieve more for this generation and the next generations to come. As we confront the challenges of development in a highly competitive global economy, let us put to good use the opportunities that come with such challenges. We are therefore eager to reestablish cultural and economic ties with this great state of Guam and to engage in trade and other mutually beneficial economic activities. The province of Pangasinan has largely untapped natural resources for agriculture, tourism, and industry. And it has a large reservoir of courage, education, educated professionals, and highly skilled craftsmen that can compete with the best of the world. Jointly with Guam, we can establish a stronger foothold in the global scene and plot a more stable path to economic development. Today, we embrace you, our long-lost brothers and sisters, as we resolve to continue the journey that has started more than 400 years ago and pursue our common destiny, a brighter future for our people. Journey will be long, and there is a lot of work ahead of us. Let us buckle down and start the work today. Thank you so much for making this historic event possible. Good morning to one and all. Mabuhay po kayong lahat. Thank you very much.
Good morning, Your Honors. Good morning, everyone. Mabuhay from the Philippines. On the third day of October 2011, the seventh Sangguniang Palalawigan of the province of Pangasinan, approved Resolutions Number 395 Series of 2011, and 395 Series of 2011, 396, I'm sorry, Series of 2011 declaring Honorable Senator Rory J. Respecho of the 31st Guam Legislature as an adopted son of the province of Pangasinan, and also declaring, likewise declaring Senator Judith D. Guthertz of the 31st Guam Legislature as an adopted daughter of the province of Pangasinan. We would like to give these certificates to them now.
Just an additional word from Governor Espino. Aside from his message earlier, he would like to extend our invitation to you to the province of Pangasinan. And God willing, that we do see each other there and make greater exchanges, that we could be given the honor of also adopting you as sons and daughters of the province of Pangasinan.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you, thank you very much. Maraming salamat po. Sayong lahat. Can I, before I entertain a motion to recess, can I please invite up Antilita Gagawin, the first Vice President? You know, this is a... Please come forward. Please come forward, Antilita. And who would like to have the honor of singing, leading the Happy Birthday song for her? It's her birthday today. Go. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, happy birthday. Happy birthday to you.
Thank you very much. This is the best birthday gift that I get. Thank you.
Senator Guthertz, I recognize you for a motion to recess, subject to the call of the Chair.
Thank you very much. Mr. Chairman, I move that the legislature recesses pending the next call of the Speaker.
Okay, thank you very much. We're in recess. We'll just have the official photo afterwards, and we also invite you to a marienda. Thank you very much, everybody.